Good morning. I want to call the February 11th Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Row call, please.
Supervisor Carol.
Here.
Supervisor Elias.
Present.
Supervisor Miller.
Here.
Supervisor Valadez.
Present.
Chair Bronson.
Here.
Let the record show, all members are present.
And now, please rise for the invocation to be offered by Pastor Dan Johnson, Eastside Covenant Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, to be led by Supervisor Valadez.
Let us pray. Our great God in heaven, we honor you as the most high God. We thank you that you have instituted government to protect the innocent, to promote the welfare of our fair city, and to serve the common good. Thank you for these leaders here today. Give them a heart to serve and not dictate. Give them wisdom to do what is just and right. Enable them to be good stewards of the public trust. Guide them, great God, to show kindness to the stranger, particularly today as the immigration issue is brought up. Guide them to live up to the creed of our nation, which is to provide liberty and justice for all. Encourage their hearts that they might serve with joy and with hope. Guard their hearts. When they are criticized and falsely accused, that they might rise above and live with integrity. Guide and bless them today. Bless their marriages and families, and bless our beautiful city of Tucson. In your great name we pray, amen.
Please join in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now, moving on to pause for pause. Officer Bowden and Spot, I think, Spot On, right? No, or...
Come on, Spot. Come on, you're going the wrong way. Spot. Oh, slippery floor, sorry. Good morning. This is Spot. Spot is a approximately five-year-old bull terrier mix. She's been with us for a couple of weeks and is anxious to find a home. So she's available for adoption. Because she's been with us for over two weeks, her adoption fee has been waived, so there's just a $15 licensing fee. That'll include for her to be spayed, for her to have her microchip, and for her first round of vaccinations. $15 gets her out the door. That's kind of a smoking deal for a 75-pound dog. She is full grown, though, so she shouldn't get any taller, maybe a little wider, but with a little exercise, maybe a little slimmer. She is a fantastic dog. I did take her on a walk this morning. She was great. She didn't pull me around. She kind of just stayed steadily at my side, at times even lingering that I had to check to make sure she was even still there because she was just so leisurely walking around. We got back to the office, and then she calmly just sat down next to me and waited next to me while I was doing the work of the computer. She just wanted to be a companion to me. If I got up and moved, she followed with me. So she's just a real pleasant dog, real sweet, mild disposition, calm. The puppy is gone out of her. She's no longer a puppy anymore. She's very much set into her middle age and is just a little bit sedentary in her life. She is, like I said, up for a walk, just not a run, maybe. So in any case, if you're interested in Spot, she's available for adoption immediately. We're open from noon until seven on weekdays, 10 until 5 on the weekends. If this isn't what you're looking for exactly, we've got lots and lots more. We have all kinds of puppies, kitties, cats, dogs. Anything that's been there over two weeks, though, the adoption fee is waived, so that's always a good deal. So if you're looking for a New Valentine this year, we might be able to fill that bill for you. So if not, though, you know, if you want to help us out, you can always volunteer, and you can go to our website if you don't have time to give, but you have a few extra pennies to give. We accept donations, so any amount is welcome. No amount is too big, no amount is too small. We just really would like for all of our community to be involved and aware of what goes on with the homeless animals in our community, and do our best to help them out. So thank you for your time, and if you're interested in Spot, come on down today, and she'll be happy to hang around with you a little bit and get to know her and see if she's the right match for you. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Elias.
Well, you know, I get the feeling Spot is a dog that's built for comfort and not built for speed, but I think that's a good thing in an interfaith dog, to tell you the truth. You know? And you could probably walk him around an industrial area, and that would be fine, too, you know? So please, especially for those members of the clergy that are here today, if you think of people in your congregation who might, you know, be interested in having a nice dog like Spot or another animal, please contact the Animal Care Division of Pima County. You can also talk to my office, and we'll get you hooked up with somebody to help keep those people company. And sometimes you guys know about that stuff better than others, and so I ask you to think about that as you go about doing your jobs and your business of the day. Because animals can do good things for us and make us all happier, and that's a good step in the right direction, I think. So, thank you.
Thank you.
She, 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 she.
She loves Bob.
Ah, she took it. There's a whole box here. Go tell her.
Thank you, guys. Have a good day. Come to it. All right.
Okay, moving on. There are no executive, no changes to the agenda at this point, and there's no executive sessions. So we'll now move to Board of Supervisors, sitting as other boards. Library District Board, item number five, grant acceptance. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll go ahead and move item five, grant acceptance, the Arizona State Library Archives and Public Records, to provide for the Leadership Summit Grant, $33,000.
Second.
Motion and a second. Are there, is there any discussion? Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to item six, call to the public for consent calendar items only. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us on any items on the consent calendar at this time? If not, we'll move on to item seven, approval of the consent calendar. What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Miller.
I'd like to poll item six on the consent calendar. I have a couple of questions.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, I move to poll item six from the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
The entire item six, and you'd like to separate an item. I'll go ahead and second, so you can discuss.
Okay, well, are there any objections to pulling item six? Motion carries. Item, we'll hear item six now. Supervisor Miller.
The question I had on this item is it's Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona to provide planning and design assistance to conduct energy audits. They're going to give us a $35,000 grant, and then Pima County is going to contribute $41,000, and it is going to be a matching obligation from Pima County in certificates of participation, which is more debt. I don't think we should be using issuing debt to pay for energy audits. And Pima County's already in debt over $1.4 billion, and given our current financial situation with rising taxes and inability to repair roads, I personally cannot approve any further debt, especially for an audit, energy, conduct of an energy audit. So I move to deny this item on the consent calendar, item six.
Is there a second? Hearing none, motion fails. Mr. Huckleberry?
Yes, Madam Chair. The Water Infrastructure Board is in the business of loaning money, and this is one of the reasons why we've got the grant. And so it's like turning down, you know, we could not go in and borrow this money from the infrastructure authority and not get the grant for $30-some thousand and borrow $41. So it's, you know, they set up their own system, and all we're doing is ensuring that advantages are ratepayers. And we'll pay that debt back probably, my guess, in a year or two. So it's very, very short term.
I know, and that's my concern, is incurring more debt for an energy audit, so that's why I moved to...
We would have to do the audit in any event, and this way we at least have $35,000 that doesn't come out of our pocket.
Madam Chair, yes. You know, that's what the Infrastructure Authority Board does, is they, basically, they're in the business of loaning money, and so to entice us to get the grant, they said, "Well, you've got to get the matching funds, and we'll loan it to you," and that's fine, but we're going to pay it back in a year or two, almost nothing. And if it leads to further reductions in energy at facilities, that's just further savings that we'll basically enjoy.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Elias.
I'll go ahead and move item six on consent.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve item six, objections?
I object.
One objection, any further objections? Hearing none, motion carries four to one.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Elias.
Seeing no one come forward from the public to address any of the items on consent, I'll move the remainder of consent.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the remainder of consent in its entirety.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Carol.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to mention off of page six of the consent calendar, item 10, I want to thank very much Charles Stupani. Charles Stupani has been a member of the Board of Health, representing District Four for, I would imagine, close to a decade. He is a local restaurateur who's done great work for us. He and members of the community that represent the industry that's most affected by the Board of Health have appreciated having Charles Stupani's leadership there, and I just want to thank him publicly for the years of service he's rendered. And I want to welcome Matt Emmick, who is a third-generation community supporter now. We all recall Fred Emmick, who was a great leader in Tucson, Oldsmobile dealer when he first arrived here. His sons and now his grandson continue the legacy of public service, not only to the county but to their faith-based organizations, and thank them.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Elias.
I would just add to that. I've been on the Board of Health since I first started on this board 12 years ago this month, and actually Chuck Stupani was always a great member of the Board of Health. He showed a lot of care about those issues that directly affected the eating establishments here in our community, but he also had a great heart for children and for people who are less fortunate in trying to maintain their health over time and recognizing that health disparities are really the enemy of all of us here in our society. So I congratulate and thank Mr. Stupani, too, for his hard work.
Let's go ahead and advertise. He owns Daglio's Restaurant, which is out there on Broadway near, I think it's Camino Seco, I'm pretty sure, but thank you very much for mentioning him as well.
Do you have a favorite item on the menu?
Daglio's, who couldn't, who could resist a cheese steak? With real bread.
I understand there's a Dan Extramine on the, no, I'm just kidding.
Thank you, Richard, for mentioning Mr. Stupani.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item eight, Board of Supervisors Immigrant Welcoming Resolution, number 2014-12. What's the pleasure of the board? We have, I think, some speakers. Would you like to hear the speakers first?
I'd very much like to hear from the speakers first, rather than going into our comments. I'm sure we'll have comments afterwards, but all these people have come here today. I think we want to hear their voices, at least.
Okay, I have three that have registered. I know Felipe Garcia with Visit Tucson would like to speak, and I think you vote, you have someone from your group. Could we get someone to fill out a green card? I have to say green card because that's what color they are. Or when you come up to speak, fill it out afterwards, and then we can, all right. With that, I'll call Jerry Otoboni.
Madam Chairman and Board of Supervisors, my name's Jerry Otoboni, and I live in Ora Valley. I don't recall any negative comments in Pima County about legal immigrants. Most of us are descendants of legal immigrants. My father comes from Italy. When I was in Greece, the men were looking for American girls to marry because their quota to immigrate to the United States was full. Many individuals from different countries have spent thousands and thousands of dollars to legally immigrate and acquire legal status. I have also met many people from around the world who have overstayed their visas. This makes them unfortunately illegal. When I have traveled to other countries, including third-world countries, they were extremely strict, wanting to know where I was going to stay and for how long. They advised me if I overstayed my, if I, I would be in a great deal of trouble if I overstayed my visa. Most countries are more strict than the United States. If you come into this country illegally, or into their country illegally, they'll throw you in jail. We have Americans in foreign jails. For example, those who go into Mexico illegally are thrown into jail. We are a friendly country to legal immigrants, and a side note is I was, I'm presuming that Rick Carroll will be voting no, because on the way down here, hearing on the radio, I heard an audio where he was against a Canadian firm bringing jobs and businesses to Pima County. I think it's wonderful...
Let's be respectful, please.
I think it's wonderful that we are welcoming legal immigrants into our county. Thank you.
My name is Christopher Cole. I reside in Tucson, Arizona, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Libertarian Party. The Libertarian Party, at all levels, national, state, and county, has no problem with legal immigration. Indeed, it is the position of the Libertarian Party that the immigration laws, as originally written and subsequently amended, are too strict and quite probably racist. They were originally designed to keep those people out of this country, and to a large extent, they still are. Legal immigration should be enhanced. This board should do whatever it can legally and properly to encourage the federal government to amend the immigration laws so that immigration is freer, so that there is not a long line of people trying to break into this country against our laws, dying in the desert because they can't come into this country legally. The Libertarian Party is not against legal immigration. We are against criminal behavior. And if Pima County wishes to welcome legal immigrants, people who come and contribute to society, even if it's only by being a grandma watching the grandkids, that's wonderful. That's great. The Libertarian Party encourages that sort of thing. But if this resolution also encourages and supports criminal behavior, smugglers, coyotes, people who break our law and come in here to get on welfare, for example, presuming that is really a serious problem, then that should be opposed. My grandfather was a first-generation American. His parents came to this country in accordance with the laws of the time, late 19th century. My other three grandparents, their ancestors who came into this country also came into this country according to the laws of the time when such laws existed, and for a long time they didn't. No laws, no illegal immigration. Immigration should be freer, should be more welcoming, and more accessible to more people throughout the world. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning. Board, Mary Murphy, Green Valley. I was here once before talking about the long line of Irish from which I hail, and they were the original pioneers, far of the original pioneers, in Green Valley. That long line of Irish started with my grandfather, who came in the late 19th century. If the no, if the Irish need not apply signs were up in New York, that's probably what brought him to Chicago. As a young man in his twenties, wanting to work, he did find work. They had their horse-drawn carriages, and he was a conductor of public transportation, and he watched it go from horse-drawn to electric. I don't know what he might say about downtown Tucson these days, bringing back the electric modern streetcar. I don't think he'd get it. But anyways, it was about 1893. My grandmother, who I only just recently found out I am the spitting image of her 100 years ago, and I thank her for good bones and fine skin at my age. She hails from, you know, it's County Cork, County Westmeath, places back in Ireland that I'm still familiar with, and I have cousins there. It was economic hard times around the world, 1893, recession, crash, bank failures, et cetera. In Chicago, we were lucky enough to have the beginnings of what was the 1893 World Fair, the Colombian exposition, that they're celebrating today. And it was during that fair, and a call-out to all people here in the country, schoolchildren, the Pledge of Allegiance was born. And I only found that out recently because I'm reading these books, and I like it. And I spoke about grandpa running money back to Ireland for their civil war and their revolution, and I am proud. Ireland, 50 years later during the '70s, had what they called the Troubles. Young men then were coming over, a couple of cousins. They came, they worked their tails off, they had sponsors, you know, Catholic Church, this, that, and the other thing. They could not get into this country legally, and they were my cousins. And one thing Ireland lost were so many of its people. To this day, it wants people like me to go with dual citizenship, which I'm investigating. They want their people back. They love their people. The Irish in great numbers came and stayed, and my cousins couldn't get in legally. The economy approved in Ireland. I actually offered to marry a distant cousin. They'd have probably locked me up then, too. They're eager to lock me up for anything these days, but anyways, bring them on. Welcome to America. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Tom Turman, have I pronounced that correctly?
You did.
Well, that's...
You're doing better than the bank is, so...
Very good.
Thank you very much, Supervisor. Appreciate it, Madam Chairman, members of the board. I'm here to speak in favor of this resolution on a number of, on a number of levels. The first level is, I guess, I think I'm the first person here who actually is speaking to you, that is a naturalized citizen. I was naturalized when I was seven years old, sitting on the judge's lap at a federal court in Lexington, Kentucky. And that represented to me the humanity of what our country's all about and what our immigration should be all about. And as we all know, right now, it's very broken. It needs to be corrected, and all we're asking is that we can somehow find ways to work together to correct that problem. I think for us here in Tucson, it is even more important because of where we're located. Seventy miles from the border is a very important and significant statement for us to make. I was reading, I was here listening to NPR recently, and they talked about Arizona and delegations going down to Mexico City to do trade negotiations. I think Maricopa County... I think Maricopa County was part of that. I think we're looking at that as well, from what I hear. And this state receives over $3 billion in trade business. Think of the thousands of jobs that that has for us. And what does it look like if we're telling people that we don't want them or that we're not interested in them? It's very important that we can really address that issue and be, as a county, a welcoming county that says, "Here, you can do business with us." Have you been to the Tucson Mall lately, on a Saturday, when you have half of Hermosillo up here and a lot of other folks coming up here, doing business in our community, shopping in our stores, staying in our hotels, dining in our restaurants? This is a part of neighborliness. This is a part of what it means to be a border community that helps everybody and reaches out to us. We passed a trade agreement, but yet I think our immigration laws have not matched that trade agreement. And that's part of the problems that we deal with, and that's the reason we need to address this issue so seriously. From a local community point of view, you know, we have a lot of people caught up in this system, our Dreamer kids, others, they didn't do anything wrong. They're just trying to do the right thing. And by saying that here we are, we are a welcoming community, we are a place where you can do business, where you can support your families, where we call out on our nation to do the right thing, so that those people can be treated maybe the way I was, sitting on the judge's lap and saying, "Okay, I profess, I care for my country, and I pledge allegiance to that country." That's all we're asking. I think that's what immigration should be all about. And hopefully, with this resolution, we can make a statement to the rest of the country that this is what America is all about. It's about families, it's about healthy economy, it's about being brothers and sisters in a hemisphere that we all belong to. For all Americans, let's make this an American resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. And speaking of trade, from the Visit Tucson Board, Felipe Garcia.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors. First of all, I want to commend all of each of you, because you have expressed great interest in trade with Mexico, opportunities in Mexico. And in particular, I want to congratulate Supervisor Carroll, because he has helped to spearhead a lot of these efforts. I was not surprised of his knowledge in Mexico. I was surprised how well he can speak Spanish...
He does.
...to the media and in front of an audience in a baseball stadium. So again, thank you for making our work easier. And I want to hopefully hire the Reverend as a spokesperson of the work we're trying to do with our neighbors down south. I don't think this immigration resolution you're passing today is going to offer amnesty or a green card for everyone. It's a statement. It's a statement saying that we welcome people from other countries to come here, conduct business. Today, 20,000 people are going to cross Nogales, Sonora, the border, with their documents. And as Reverend said, a lot of them are going to be going to Tucson Mall, Park Place, to shop, and they're going to be paying sales tax in our community. And those folks now are looking to open businesses in our community. They're trying to invest here in Tucson. They're buying real estate here in our community. And we're trying to send that message that we welcome those visitors to come here. Unfortunately, our state has not been known worldwide because of its immigration policies. Right now, any immigration-related law that is enacted or proposed by any state in the United States in Mexico and Latin America is nicknamed an Arizona law. So if tomorrow, Wisconsin, Oregon, any state of the U.S., it's trying to pass an immigration bill, again, setting up precedent like SB 1070, the media in Mexico would automatically name that an Arizona law is being proposed. So that's the name, that's the perception that people south of the border have. We want that trade. We want that billion dollars with a B spent by Mexican nationals here. So I commend you for looking into this issue. We're working with your team, Economic Development, to develop a strong program for Pima County to take advantage of those visitors coming from Mexico, but not only that, those potential investments coming from Mexico and become Pima County to be that place where people want to entry to the United States. So again, thank you for everything you're doing for our community and for tourism. And again, when you see those license plates at the mall, say hello, say thank you for shopping, and entice them to, again, spend more money here in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Reverend Randy Mayer.
Good morning, Chairperson Bronson and your fellow supervisors. As you know, this immigration resolution has taken over a year to work through the process. I invite to stand at this time the religious leaders against 1070 and the Pima County Interfaith Council, as well as the many humanitarian groups that have collaborated to get it to this point. This resolution started with a group of faith leaders reflecting on how our community over the past three years, since the adoption of Senate Bill 1070, has been torn apart. Members and friends of our congregations have been targets of overzealous law enforcement officers, and the overall trust in community fabric has been shredded. While our first resolution was focused on trying to counter Senate Bill 1070, after initial conversations, and I believe we talked to every single supervisor, at least once or twice, after our initial conversations, we decided that Senate Bill 1070, while harmful to our communities, most of it has been declared unconstitutional, it is in the past, and we need to look forward to the future, to a better future. That is hopefully what we have before you today in this resolution. A resolution that really takes direction from the Pima County Economic Development Plan and looks at Pima County in the context as a critically important region along the U.S.-Mexico border. Many people don't understand that Pima County has the longest border with Mexico of any county in the nation. It is a region where thousands of people live, work, and recreate. It is home to us, to all of us. Surprisingly, for all the dangerous crime rhetoric, our border communities are among the safest in the nation. This resolution recognizes that we should be proud of that, and we should say that often, and we should say it loudly to the rest of the nation. This resolution recognizes that we should be a gateway to the rest of the state, to the rest of the nation. For travelers, shoppers, and businesspeople from the South, we should be that economic engine for the rest of the nation. One in every 24 workers in the United States depends on this region, depends on our border to be efficient and effective. When Pima County declares itself as immigrant welcoming, it will be joining only five other counties in the whole nation to do so. It also will be joining cities like Tucson, Douglas, Nogales, Flagstaff, and Prescott that are trying to counter this negative anti-immigration message. As a county, we will be sending a message that we welcome and that we respect all. Yes, people do pay attention to this kind of stuff. It puts a positive spin on a national issue. It puts our county leadership in a place of taking a lead on immigration and border issues. Imagine that. This is our backyard. People should hear what we are experiencing, and our response is one that says, "We will not live in fear. We will instead look with hope and promise and see that our diversity and ethnic and cultural mixture is a strength. It is a foundation for our workforce and enriches our lives in ways we can't imagine." So thank you for allowing us to work through this process with you. Your yes vote, your yes vote, will be a building block for a better Pima County.
Thank you. Oscar, is it Rayo?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm being encouraged by my pastor to be here. I didn't expect it, so I don't have a prepared statement. My name is Oscar Rayo. I'm a father of two here in Tucson, been married for 21 years, beautiful wife from Michigan. I was born in Nicaragua. I came to the United States in 1982, 30-plus years ago, and the reason I am here is because, like I tell most Americans, to make it quick, I was squeezed between two superpowers, the United States and fought against the Soviet Union, and we were the result of it, okay? A lot of my people struggled to get out of our countries. I was fortunate enough that my family has own wealth, not a lot, but enough that I can apply to the United States Embassy. But that is a fortunate thing. But I know the majority of the people in Latin America, we couldn't do that, because the majority of us are poor. That is truth. There's no need to have economics or anything in it. So what does that mean? Example, a year, three months after I left Nicaragua, my country, the government that I lived in, decided not to give us any passport to the kids my age. And my brother had to be smuggled out of there. He had to be brought here illegally. And that was the only one in our family who actually had to cross the border illegally. My mom came here legally, everybody came here legally except my brother, but that was because our government didn't want us to. The majority of people in our countries are poor, but the majority of people in our countries, if you go back, you will notice that we are hard workers, entrepreneurial. I am an entrepreneurial person. I have worked in the United States since I got here. I have not been without of work for one day. Worked in construction in Los Angeles, in the Bay Area. I worked, managed a company for a corporation. And here, I opened my own business, been in business for more than seven years. What I noticed, sadly, the other day, I'm a computer person, sadly, the other day on the website, I came across something that said, "What do you believe? What do you think of Arizona?" And they say, "Arizona is hot, racist, and stupid." Do we really want to say that about us? You go to the internet, every state is being asked what they believe of, and those are the three things that came out of Arizona. We need to make a statement here in Pima County, saying that we are not those three things. I'm sorry, we are hot, though.[1345.83][1345.83](laughter)
We're going to be hot this weekend.
Can't get rid of that heat. Now, about Mexico, the majority of folks that come here are from Mexico. That's the truth, because the other countries are far down. But we live, it's a third-world country, but up against a first-world country. Now, our government, the federal government, has always had the power to fix this, always. There are two reasons they don't fix this, and we all know it. One, because employers want to employ cheap employees. That's the truth. But two, is the reason we're here is a lot of times, our government, the United States government, because now it's my government, I'm a citizen, our government also is involving a lot of stuff that it shouldn't, wars, destruction in other places.
Your three minutes are up. I'm going to ask you to try to wrap up briefly.
Well, my statement, the only thing I stood up to say is that, do we really want to be called the bad neighbor? No. You don't take the money from other people, being Mexicans, and say, "Get out of here. We don't want you." You don't slap them in the face. You never slap your neighbor when you want to leave in peace.
Thank you. Bob Dorson.
I've been in Tucson since 1953. And in 1953, we're a welcoming community, and we're a welcoming community today, although not as welcoming as I would like to see it, having gone through elementary, junior high, and Tucson High School and the University of Arizona. I've seen a lot of changes here. There were 55,000 people in Tucson when we moved here. I think this resolution is most important. It does go and state where the county is coming from and the county Board of Supervisors. More important, though, would be the board going and telling us and showing us what they can do to go and make us and continue for us to be a welcoming community. We can say something like we're saying here, and as I repeat, it's very important, but we need to go and take some actions that really go and show that. The United States Congress, the Governor's Office, numerous other legislative agencies have said we need to secure the border. And I've yet to see anything explaining to me what securing the border is. I used to joke that if we hired more and more Border Patrol agents, at one point in time, we would be able to line them up from California to Texas, and they could hold hands. And I thought, maybe that will be securing the border. At the same time, I know that we had a trial, and a man was sentenced to 30 years in jail for the murder of Officer Terry. It's a tragic incident. I don't believe we still have all the facts on what took place there. We know that there were weapons that were found from the fast and furious, and yet we didn't even know what weapon Officer Terry was killed by. And at the same time, in reaction to what we can be doing, a young man, a teenager, was shot eight times in the back by a Border Patrol agent running away from our border, as well as numerous other Mexican nationals that have been shot on that side of the border. We need to go and make this aware to the community. We need to bring it to everyone's attention. I've been trying for a year and a half to get information on this, and I have been refused. It's not public information. This is from the FBI. No one will go and ensure that information of what took place. I do thank you. I hope that we'll continue to move forward and continue to be a welcoming community.
Thank you.
Can I make one other comment in regard to something that's not on the agenda, real quickly, or no?
Not, we have a call to the audience. You can at that point. If it's not on the agenda, you're welcome. And we're, the meeting should be relatively short, so if you stay for a few minutes, you can come up at that point. Thank you. And I'm not sure on this one, if you wish to speak about this item, Billy Lolos? I'm sorry, what? No. Not on immigration? Okay, you on another item. So we'll get you a call to the audience, okay? We don't have a card for you.
Yes, you do. I put it up there.
Oh, you do? Oh, you had call to the audience on...
Oh, I'm sorry. But it is on this topic, and I would like to speak after you.
Well, no, I'll call you now.
No, ma'am, that's my right to speak after you.
No, I mean, I am not going to speak. We, if you want to speak to this issue, you speak now.
So what you're telling me is you want to change the rules?
No.
We'll do that.
There are no rule change. I mean, if we are done with the call with the audience, then we discuss, and that ends, and then we take a vote. That's the normal procedure, sir.
Let us continue. Now, I am Keith Van Heenigan, American, who is naturalized, because my parents were serving in the military overseas at the time. The only time I have felt unwelcome in Tucson is usually when I'm taping someone like Richard Elias or Rojena Romero, speaking in front of La Raza, the Communist Party, or illegal alien invaders. I have them on tape many times. Go to YouTube, they're there. This is a farce. Immigrant welcoming. You're talking about legal, right? All these people are talking about illegal. Someone is either very confused or lying through their teeth. Liberty and justice for all, and the pledge stands for American citizens, not foreign invaders. You want to talk about equal protection under the law stated in the Constitution? Let's do it. We have immigration laws. We have limits that are set for a reason. You prefer that people would break them. Illegal aliens drive down wages. It's a known fact. You want to legalize 10, or is it 20, or is it 30, or is it 50 million other poor, uneducated people? The national psyche is there. We watch the news.
The national psyche is there, we watch the news. It affects how people behave, as you can tell from all these young school shooters, who are usually on psychotropic drugs and come from Democrat households. Yes, Brian Terry was murdered by a criminal from the other side of the border, with weapons given to him by the Obama administration. That fast and furious plan is what's known as treason. If you don't know, your past, you're doomed to repeat it. We have a fascist government at this point. They're incompetent, they're corrupt, and immoral. You see, every man in my family for the last five generations has fought, bled, and/or died for this country. We know the Constitution, we know the Declaration of Independence, our founding documents. This is America. We are not here to be abused at the leisure of other countries. We are not here to babysit the people who flee their own countries because they're too weak or uneducated to fight against their oppressive governments. I'm here to educate you. We, the people, will not stand for this much longer. And right, no, I don't think I will run for your office next time, because it's really not worth it. I could not contort myself like you. Have a good day, even though I had an extra minute like everybody else.
There are no other speakers, what's pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Miller.
First of all, I'd like to thank all the speakers that were here this morning. I too, come from a family of immigrants, I came from Ireland, as the lady did before, and we were welcomed into this country, hardworking immigrant families, my family is from County Luth. I would just like to say, the state of Arizona and Pima County needs to ensure the human resources and infrastructure are in place to move goods and people across the border, so the Tucson corridor becomes the inland port of choice for Mexican trade. We already know that much of that trade is being directed to Texas, as they have put the infrastructure in place. And we need to catch up to ensure we're competitive in this global economy. We all know Mexico is quickly growing as an economic power, and if we don't become more business friendly and ensure that trade is coming our way, we will end up losers in the end. I believe the United States, which Arizona and Pima County are a part of, has always been the beacon of immigrant friendly. I come from a family of immigrants, as I said, as did most families sitting in this room, and in these chambers today. I believe that we all recognize the work of people like Felipe Garcia, who is working very diligently to try to increase trade with Mexico, and I encourage that effort, and I thank you for that effort. And with that, I would support this immigrant welcoming county resolution. Thank you.
Supervisor Elias.
Do we have another speaker card that was submitted right now?
We do, but we've kind of closed off the debate.
Okay.
You're welcome, if you want to stay a few minutes after we had the regular call to the audience to address us.
That will work, thank you, sir. I would just comment that, you know, one of our speakers today mentioned that he came here in 1953, you said, or 63? And it was a welcoming community then, and, and you know, well, my dad was born here in Tucson in 1928, and it's funny, we had a conversation last night, and he said, you know, "This has always been a welcoming places, as long as I've been alive, son," and that's been 85 years. But the, the real issue is, is that you have to work at that. It's not a given, that that's something that we have to work at and we share together. And I think he was right about that. Immigrants and refugees are a vital part of our economy. The contributions that they make every day make a big difference in what we're doing, and we have to recognize that, because we have thousands and thousands and thousands of folks living in our community, who represent those various populations, and we're proud of each and every one of them. The Elias families have been here for seven generations, but I can guarantee you that we have not forgotten that we are immigrants, and that we came here from another place, and that remains deep in our soul, and it gives us a keen guide to where we should be going into the future. I think the question today, the surrounding larger immigrant issues, not just about this, and I recognize that this, this particular resolution is non-binding, and it's about immigrants who are here legally, and it's about refugees who work hard, together with all of us, and the state of our community. But it's also true that when we look at the larger picture of immigration, the question today has changed a lot. And we've come to understand that it's about a government that is separating families and destroying their ability to be successful. And secondarily, it's about our economy, and wanting to make sure that we can all succeed together. That's why it's imperative that we continue to work together to change immigration laws, to be more fair, and welcome and honor those people who have come here legally, and work hard with us every day of the week, and welcome people who come to, to visit our country, to do business, to buy things, to maybe enjoy a little bit of our food, maybe enjoy a little bit of our, of our music and our fun that we share with each other here in our community. I think that's really what this is all about today. And, you know, those people who speak out against this, this resolution, I understand their reticence, we certainly understand their argument, but it is time to move on and make improvements here in the United States, and make improvements here in Pima County. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and move item eight, Resolution 2014-12.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve item eight and Resolution 2014-12. If there's no further discussion, are there any objections? Hearing non-motion carries unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to item nine, transportation and acceptance of project roadway for maintenance. What's pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Elias.
I'll go ahead and move item nine.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve item nine, are there objections? Hearing non-motion carries. I'm gonna take a couple-minute break to let the room clear, before we move on. We're gonna, we're gonna move on, Supervisor Carol will be back very soon, but we're just moving on now to items 10 and 11, franchises, license, and permits. These are hearings, is there anyone who wishes to address us on items 10 and 11?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Elias.
Seeing no one come forward to address us on items 10 or 11, and these are hearings, I move to close the public hearing and approve items 10 and 11.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve, discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to flood control district board on addendum number one. We have a speaker on item one, Mary Murphy.
Good morning. Again, I like these two-a-days, maybe we'll get three a-day, that'll be great.
Sure.
The flood control thing, and this business with the Rosemont mine, I don't know if I tapped a nerve with my NOAA analogy to the Bible and the tailings, and I went back, you know, once you have the hell scared out of you, you go back, you know, it's already been done, and it was a hellscape back there, so my fears were right where they belonged. Reading a lot about this, what I'm primarily interested in, that there seems to be a coming together of all of these issues. I don't know how you're gonna keep $29 billion worth of copper from coming out of the Santa Rita's. I don't think it's the objection to the ore, taking out of the ore, except the way we leave things when, when it's done. And that would be the tailings, and one thing I haven't seen lately is the Army Corps of Engineers weighing in on this. I see Forest Service, I'm reading flood control. I have a shovel-ready flood control project right downstream from my house, that flood control can't seem to get a handle on it, so I don't know if we can put full faith and confidence into them at this point. The Army Corps of Engineers, when I read about their tailings and filling in things like canyons, Beryl Canyon, Wasp Canyon, I, it's the tailings part of it that I don't, I don't get, why it has to be this way in this day and age. We've got plenty of places to go, and the business with increased traffic on Box Canyon coming there, I have to, hey, where's she been, her excellent adventures? When I moved here from Green Valley, my U-Haul driver, I said, "Let's take this Box Canyon." Here we are, pulling a U-Haul, driving a U-Haul and towing my car, and we went in there, and my driver will never forgive me. But my family got to think, she'll be coming around the mountain when she comes, every time, he, he will never forgive me, and I was scared to death there too. It seems the only people that I hear about being up there are the teenagers, had one too many drinks after prom, and had, had some mishaps. The west side of the Santa, of the Santa Rita's, there's the white scar on the mountain, that's always been referred to as the scar on the, gypsum, okay, I didn't know what was coming out of that, I was thinking borax, because it's white, it's a gypsum. And that was there when I was a child, I remember my mother saying, it's grown over the years, and it's, it's in our face every time we drive toward them on Continental Road. And it was some years after that, that mom and I were coming up north, driving north from Toubac. Dad was in the hospital, he'd had a heart attack or a stroke, I'd flown out here from Chicago just to be with mom, so we were running around on our own. And she pointed out the tailings, she said, "Those are the mine tailings, they were somewhere off in the distance." And I looked away, and I have to live with having looked away, we can't look away. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, back to the agenda, item one, regional flood control district, objection to Rosemont copper, what's pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I'll move the item.
Motion and a second to approve item one. Supervisor Miller.
I'd just like to express my objection to this, we are in a, in a time when we need jobs in Pima County, our taxes have increased, our debt is $1.4 billion, and the last thing we need to be doing is discouraging jobs in Pima County, and therefore, I cannot support the district objection to Rosemont copper mine plan of operations in the final environmental impact statement.
Any further discussion? Then we'll call the question, are there any objections?
Yes, I object.
One objection, any further objections? Hearing non-motion carries four to one, moving on to item two, flood control district board, it's also connected with regional wastewater reclamation, item six, what's pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Carol.
Madam Chair, on the addendum agenda, I'd like to go ahead and move item two, the contract with Pima County Regional Flood Control District, as well as item six, under regional wastewater reclamation, at no cost for the grant of sewer easement for the construction of the North Rita Relief Sewer.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve items two, under flood control district board, and then item six, under board of supervisors sitting in regular session. Are there any comments, discussion, any objections? Hearing non-motion carries. Moving on to board of supervisors in regular session, contracting award, community development, and neighborhood conservation, items three and four, what's pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
I'll go ahead and move items three and four, and item five as well.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve items three, four, and five, under five is Health Animal Welfare Alliance of Southern Arizona. Discussion, objection, hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to items seven, eight, and nine. Supervisor Elias.
I'll move the remainder of the addendum.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve items seven, eight, and nine. Discussion, objections, hearing non-motion carries, we'll recall to the audience. Bob Dorson?
I apologize, I haven't been at one of your meetings in a couple of years, but one thing I did notice right away, right when I entered and your meeting started, if one of the supervisors is behind their computer screen, and they're looking down at what they're gonna go and discuss and share with the rest of the meeting, someone who is hard of hearing cannot see their face, cannot read their lips, which is very important for somebody like that, and the fact that that screen is over there with closed captioning, I'm wondering what his purpose is? What's he doing there? Is that for you to see? I mean, it's just, it's just amazing that, that this has not been brought to anyone's attention before, because it should be something that, that everybody should be aware of.
Thank you, you have brought it to our attention.
And I just, I just also just have to share this with you, I actually pulled it out a week ago, and it says that if the mine were to be opened today, the Forest Service would have a little more control over the way it was mined. July 4th, 1976, that's when the scar was first put on the Santa Rita Mountains. We can't let that continue.
Thank you. Have I pronounced your name correctly? Well, tell me how.
But that's all right, it's great, that's Spanish. Members of the board, thank you for giving me this opportunity. I have a sad story that unfortunately doesn't have a happy ending. Back in September of 2012, I decided to grow my hair to give to the cancer patients, and Locks for Love is the program, and a year later, in September of 2013, I was diagnosed with stage four liver cancer. The prognosis is terminal, and they were treating me with narcotics for pain, and it almost killed me, so I weaned myself off the pain, and my oncologist gave me a medical marijuana prescription, and I was gonna use medical marijuana as an appetite stimulant, sleep aid, and pain management. Well, I went to the dispensaries, and I heard the chief of Tucson say that this medical marijuana is a hoax, people just want to get high. Well, the hoax is not being perpetrated by the patients, the hoax is being perpetrated by the dispensaries. They have no organically grown product, they don't lay, I went into, the first three places I went into, didn't even have a restroom for their patients. They call themselves patient consultants, they use chemically fertilized product, the edibles that they had weren't even labeled, which is the law. I said, "What's in this?" The girl said THC. I said, "Well, what else? I'm on a cancer diet, which means I eat all organic food, everything from the earth, nothing processed, there's no GMOs, I juice, and I can't get my medicine." nothing processed, there's no GMOs, I juice, and I can't get my medicine without it being chemically fertilized, and they spray with an insecticide to kill the spider mites. I mean, it's totally ridiculous. And when you talk to the people, "Oh, we're trying to find it." These people were opened up with no oversight from the health department, and this is a health issue. They opened up, they had no labeling of their edibles. I said, "Well, I need to know what's in it because I can't eat it. There's certain things I don't put in my body because I'm trying to heal. I'm a patient." And when they told me I had to leave the building to use the restroom, it was totally, totally cruel. I said, "I drink three-quarters of a gallon to a gallon of distilled water every day, and if I sit here for 30 minutes, I'm in distress." And when I went, just yesterday, I went and said, "Do you have organically grown product?" "No." Okay? Do you have organic edibles? "No." They are all about the money. They buy from the cheapest grower who manages to use the most fertilizer, does the most spraying, gets the highest yield, and that's what they buy because they're about the money. They're not about health. And I would like to ask you people to direct the county health department to monitor and regulate these things because it's not fair that I go to a market and I got a choice between organic and non-organic. When I go to the medical marijuana dispensary, I cannot ingest. I have to break the law to get medicine for me, and I'm a card carrier. I'm asking for help here. They didn't give me a lot of time, but I'll tell you what, it's been almost five months and I'm still here, and I look pretty good because of my diet. I am not going to risk that to ingest fertilizer pesticide. Please, help me out. Thank you.
Kate Vaughn-Harmon.
Well, different subject. First time I've seen Billy, he's a friend of mine in months, and he's not lying. Medical marijuana in this state was turned into a business from the word go. It's not what I'm here to talk about. I'm here to talk about Rosemont Mine and how certain government officials think they can make comments in the paper and have no idea what they're talking about except what they've been told. Yes, Sharon, talk about you. Been a professional land surveyor for 17 years of my life. I've worked many mines here, Chicago, Indiana, Michigan. I've built everything from highways to runways. I've maintained nuclear power plant grid systems. The thing I see is a county government who is opposed to progress. We have some of the worst roads in the country. We have one of the highest poverty rates in the country. We have some of the highest taxes in the country. It doesn't faze any of you. It's not your money. It's the money you're taking from me. You're Robin Peter to pay Paul. I know you got all your little boards set up to protect you from responsibility. I know that you think you're doing the right thing, but you're not. If you want to live in a society like we do, you need copper mines. If we don't, then we can just buy it from somebody else and become their slaves because that's effectively what you're doing. You want to bring in more illegals and make them citizens, really? The participation rate in our economy for your average citizen is at its lowest in 32 years. That's because of the government, not because of we, the people. We have too many issues that the media won't talk about. They've already left. You know, they got to film their pro-illegal amnesty, you know, whatevers. They don't want to know what's real. You know, we have people saying, "Oh, Obamacare is so great." Really? CBO says it's going to kill two-and-a-half million jobs. It's already thrown, what, eight or 10 million of us off our insurance already. That shows you how brilliant our government is, not. I know you don't like hearing the opposing view, Ray, but you're going to hear it, and it's going to get louder every day because we're right. Our government is killing this country, and they grin about it. We're not grinning. We will survive. Have a nice day.
Mary Murphy.
Mary Murphy again. And one of my best friend down in Green Valley, she sees these things. I tell her to turn on channel 12, and she says, "You know, you don't go up there to entertain these people." I'm like, "But I can't help myself. You know, this is my nature." So when I hear something that was kind of off-script, when I hear about medical marijuana, I just thought I'd bring up the story back. I know I told Ray Carroll some time ago that I was hit by a drunk driver at 111th and Kedzie, right in our neighborhood, and that landed me in the hospital for three weeks. Little company of Mary Hospital where I was born, were you born there as well?
Yes.
Come on, I knew you were. It was the only hospital. My, you're involved with this hospital down there, and my family has funded, built, and staffed hospitals. Well, my cousin's sister, Michael Murray, was probably in charge of the nuns that delivered you.
Goddamn.
Yeah. But anyways, after that drunk driver hit me, and they got my left leg in traction and my face was yet to be rebuilt.
Wait a minute, I was in the hospital.
No, 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 no. I was.
You sure I was in there, too?
March 78?
Possibly.
Possibly, okay. Well, anyways, I got to tell you what I was doing in my room since I do not like narcotics. My family doctor, World War II vet, he suggested to my cousin, Sister Michael Murray, charge at the nursing staff, "Well, maybe she could smoke some marijuana." And Sister Michael Murray said to my mother, her cousin, "Maybe Mary could smoke some marijuana." And Mom said, "All her friends do. We're going to have no problem getting her some doobies up there." And they said, "Bring the brewskis, too, because she's got to learn how to use this bedpan, so let's get her stoned and feed her beer." I wasn't going anywhere. My leg was in traction. But anyways, that's the medical marijuana thing. I have smoked in hospital. The other thing, I didn't mean to be entertaining. My friend's going to say, "Don't be telling them stuff like that." The other thing he had to do with our conversation, Mr. Carroll called me yesterday, thank you very much. I've been accused of being a micro-manager or something. Like I said, it's the micro because I'm five feet two. I have pictures for you of upstream drainage way number eight. I have pictures of downstream where the golf course is, where the standing water and the mosquito problem, the worst of the mosquito problem is. What I'm having problems with is our government. My homeowners association is government. Green Valley Council is government. Pima County is government. And what I'm finding out now is government has taken up arms against me, and that's not going to stand. It's not going to fly. We'll go straight from civil rights into human rights if we're not careful there. Some documents for everybody about our GVC. I don't know if you have things like this in your other towns and the pictures. You're going to see them on at Sluster tonight. You could look at these. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Gardi.
Good morning. My name is Michael Gardi. I know actually all of you, having attended Ms. Miller's outreach at Bear Canyon Library, and I wanted to give you an update on a resolution that we originally had planned to do with Pima County and now is being shifted over to the city of Tucson. Quite frankly, don't know exactly why that switched, but the resolution was to, the Citizens Initiative, to establish a Democracy Day on a yearly basis, and like I said, was originally going to be for the Board of Supervisors to hold, and now will be for the City Council to hold. And basically what it is, and the gentleman who spoke earlier, I think understands that there are some real issues in this thing. I think he's looking at the wrong perpetrator. Perpetrator is not government. Perpetrators are corporations. Corporations that believe that they have to have profit above health of our citizenry, above the health of our economy. And the Supreme Court, in their Citizens United decision, basically said that corporations are people and money is speech. I like something I saw at the Occupy, the original Occupy thing at Armored Park. It said, "I'll believe a corporation is a person as soon as Texas executes one." I don't have any problem with corporations that are legal and lawful and that look out for their employees, look out for the communities they're in, but I do have a problem with companies that believe that pollution is the cost of doing business for the people who live around them. That might be Rosemont Mine, it might be oil companies, certainly is the tar sands. So what this Democracy Day is going to do is it's going to provide a forum for people to talk about how money affects elections. I was out this weekend, collected close to 100 signatures for a variety of different candidates. That's what I think is the way we should do democracy as opposed to corporations buying votes with dark money that's not even disclosed who gave the money to, the candidates or the organizations that do the, you know, usually the negative ads. So anyway, I just wanted to let you know where things are and hope that you can get signatures on that. And Ms. Miller, I'm sorry I didn't get it down to your office, but I will bring you a copy of the new one. Thank you very much, and thank you for doing the welcoming resolution. That is wonderful.
Thank you. And our final speaker, Andrew Cohen. I think he left. Did he leave? Did he leave? Okay. Okay, quick.
Thank you.
An out your name for the record.
I'm Bob Dorson. I was going to talk to each of you individually, but I'd rather just get up here and just share this with you briefly. A gentleman by the name of Marcus Titus is a former All-American swimmer at the University of Arizona. He missed out on the 2012 Olympics by one one-hundredth of a second. After a year off, he decided he wants to try and make it to Rio in 2016, and I'm trying to help him raise money to make it there. He's a young man who grew up and went to Flowing Wells High School, so I hope that you in particular will recognize that and see what you can do. He happens to be almost completely 100% deaf, and so it makes it even harder for him to achieve his goals because in order to go to international meets, he would also need to have an interpreter travel with him. He's going tomorrow to Orlando, but he needs to be competing with the Michael Phelps and so forth, and I think he deserves any chance that you can go and give him either from the board itself or from each of you individually. Literally going to take thousands of dollars to achieve that goal, and hopefully we can have an outstanding young man representing Tucson, Pima County, Flowing Wells in 2016. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no one else wishing to address the board at this time. This meeting stands adjourned.
Guam and numerous countries outside of the U.S. Here and abroad, Recovery Month events bring together the courageous people in recovery, the caring service providers that work tirelessly to support people in recovery, and family members and friends who are instrumental in initiating and sustaining recovery. Community events are an effective way to deliver Recovery Month key messages to a variety of audiences. There are also many fun and creative ways to get the message out. We saw celebrations, conferences, parades, rallies, walks, sporting events, block parties, motorcycle rides, dances, and...